Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our board meeting for this evening. I want to go ahead and call to order.
Ms. Mornington?
Here.
Ms. Turner-Burch?
President.
Ms. Atkins? Ms. Macklin?
Here.
Ms. Carter?
Here, thank you so much. If we can please stand for the pleasure of leaders. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. We do have Dr. Thariq sitting in for Dr. Johnson. Dr. Johnson is out of the office and on a trip at this moment. She is away from the office, but we appreciate Dr. Thariq coming in and sitting in for her. Dr. Johnson does say she apologizes that she can't be here. So we're going to move on to our acknowledgement of goals 2.01. Please read those at your leisure. We're going to move on to, if anyone want approval of our minutes 3.01. Approval of minutes from October 16th, 2025, our Duffer Board of Education work session. May I have a motion? It's been motioned by Mrs. Mornington and seconded by Mrs. Macklin that we approve the minutes from October 16th, 2025 meeting. Are there any questions? Here we are, roll call please.
Ms. Mornington?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner-Burch?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, as a 4 to 0, thank you board. Moving on, we are now going to go to awards presentations and communication. We are now going to hear from our Central Primary School presentation. We are going to have Mr. Antonio Gaines, our Central Primary Principal, come on up.
Good evening. Justin. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board President Carter, Board members, Taylor, and Dr. Thariq. So my name is Antonio Gaines. I am the principal here at Central Primary School, and I want to give you a snapshot of what's going on here at Central. So this is our tagline. You all seen this before, our vision, our core values, and also our mission statement, which is to inspire everyone every day to achieve excellence. And as you can see, if you come into our building, you will see that our students could recite our mission statement as well as embody it daily as they walk through hallways and also inside of the classroom. The presenters for today is myself, Mr. Gaines, and our Dean of Academics, Ms. Antalya Leford. As you've seen before, our District One Plan goals, and that is to increase, goal number one is to increase our state report card as it relates to our achievement, early literacy gap closing and graduation. And goal number two is to increase our report card component as it relates to attendance. Central, we also have R1 Plan goals as well, and that is to increase our report card component as it relates to early literacy and gap closing as it relates to our I-Rate reading and math scores, and they are on the slide here. And also, goal two is to increase our report card component as it relates to attendance and chronic absenteeism. What we teach here at Central, we have our ELA, which is 120 minutes of structured time. And our curriculum that we use is My View. ELA for mathematics, we have 75 minutes of structured time, and our curriculum that we use is individual math. And for science and social studies, we use our curriculum ASALAS, and 30 minutes of structured time there as well. And for our elects, we have art, music, PE, technology, and we have an amazing SEL staff that does push-in and guided lessons. Here's our report card component. Our overall rating, we had a 2.5 stars. In gap closing, we had four stars. In early literacy, we had a one star. Now, we know we have a lot of work to do here at Central because this is the foundation of early literacy. We did meet our annual goal and showed improvement prior, in the prior year, as it relates to our chronic absenteeism. And for our early literacy improvement, last year, we had 176 students on a rank, which is a reading improvement plan. This year, we have 141 students on a rank. That's nearly 20% of students fewer. Now, we'd like to celebrate those small victories, those small gains. So of course, we have a lot more work to do here at Central, and the next couple of slides will show you how we're going to get to move that needle. Here's our I-Rate reading fall data. So this is the beginning of the year data, and this is fairly typical for our beginning of the year data. And as you see, we have our tiers of the number of students who are in those tiers. And then also, it's broken down by the students who are in the particular grades, the number of students who are in those grades. Now, again, our math data, it is typical as well for the beginning of the school year data. And what we do a good job here at Central is gap closing. So by the end of the school year, you'll see that that red start to decrease, that yellow start to decrease, and that green start to increase. And so that means that we do a good job in gap closing. And how we're going to move that needle, our daily instructional focus is our wing groups, and that is our intentional small group instruction. We focus on engaging lessons, differentiated supports, our systems and routines and procedures, and our positive feedback that we provide to our staff and our students. Our engagement focus is our call to response, turn and talk, songs, our songs and musics, our rhythm and repetition, our peer discussion, our academic discourse from peer to peer, and our formative check-ins. And as it relates to our school climate and culture, I'll pass it over to Mrs. Cliff.
Hello, everyone. So our school climate and culture just really talks about how it feels to be at Central, how we promote safety and learning, and how we promote positivity, relationship building, things of that nature. We really want school to be fun for students, but also we want to learn to be the most important here. So we are a school that follows the PBIS, the Positive Behavior Interventional Supports. So we push the positive a lot with student incentives. This year, I've actually highlighted the additions that we have implemented for this year so that we can see our behavior data to decrease. So we have a bi-monthly incentive for students. We're finding that four weeks, waiting four weeks until you are getting an incentive, it just doesn't quite work. So we have that bi-monthly, it's like at the halfway point. And students have celebrated their positive choices with stickers, with suckers, but also the big events are like our Fall Fest or our extra recess. We have some other things coming up. We're just kind of getting started there. We also have started our roar assembly, so we want to gather all of the students so that they, so that we can celebrate the great things that they are doing. When they are showing respectful, open-minded, achieving and responsible behavior, we want for everyone to see, when you are doing and demonstrating these things, guess what? You get recognition, you get a certificate, you get to put on your refrigerator, your family gets to celebrate with you. We've also thrown in I-Rate as well because we want for our students to grow and to reach their goals that they have set. Also, we have our mini roar store. Myself and Mr. Gaines, we are giving out roar bucks for students who we catch doing the right thing or following the expectations, or even by teacher recommendation. That store is going to be up and running pretty soon. The prices are $5, $10, and $20 or $15. We also newly have our weekly morning meetings. They are virtual, where we get to scale build and target some behaviors that we want to see. So we have focused on showing respect, being responsible. We focus also on using manners, because you will not believe, the lines are very passionate places for students. And so that's just our time to all come together. Students love it. They love to see their friends virtually and to wait and things of that nature. We are also in the groove of establishing a consistent meeting with our second grade boys and our first grade girls so that we can promote community and relationship building as well as see those students who really need that heart-to-heart connection, you know, them to do really well. As far as our climate and data, so this is our 24-25 and our current comparison. I've highlighted our first and second grade that we have made some growth in. You will see that kindergarten has had a little bit of spike, but I am so excited to report that coming off of August and September, that number is decreasing, and so we're going to be lowering it even more. But as far as the behavior interventions, in addition to the things that we already have, we have alternative recess. So that is for students who might get a little bit passionate about like chasing and things of that nature. They just need a different activity. So how about like building blocks or playing with chalk, drawing, coloring, things of that nature, exercising, all outside with their peers. We also have our peace out room, so that is the time for our SCL teams to individually pull our students to work on skills. A lot of our students, they just need conversations and a lot of reminders, and that is where time is not anything that is disciplinary. We also have do it again. If a student does something like run down the hall, they get to do it again. They get to feel how it feels to practice something and do it correctly. And then we also are going to be implementing our grade, class level meetings, even practicing with whole classes or grades by way of our student leadership slash council. We also are, of course, allowing for our parents and the community to get involved. So we are with our One2Free Read Ambus with the Vefr Library. We also have had our Fathers Walk, a couple of other things. Newly, we also have our newsletter where we are sharing all of the information so that parents can be a part, we can build that partnership, and we can work together to make school feel like the best learning environment for our students.
Lastly, we have our student engagement and staff engagement and highlights. And I have to put the plug in there. Oh, that's my time, but I have to put the plug in there. That here at Central, we have some of the best staff members here. No shout to any other school in the district, but we do have some of the best staff members here. Our Community of Champions, our Staff Member of the Month. We already have celebrated Ms. Jackson and Ms. Teresa Schwartz. For our Students of the Month, they have special privileges, assigned to cafeteria, social media shout-outs. And next week, we have our Students of Excellence that will have lunch with Dr. Johnson. And our assemblies, we have special guests, the Animal Yoga Program, Tu Tairi Kung Fu, and also Captain I-Rate, AKA Mr. Gaines, but I'm telling the students that. So we do have a video, but you guys can watch it at your leisure. That's my time. That's everything that went on here at Central. And questions for us?
Thank you so much. Any questions, tell the board members? Good job, Mr. Gaines.
Thank you. I had just a couple of questions. How often did you win and how long?
Thirty, so win is 30 minutes and it's daily.
Stay with me. Okay. And my second was, what's a formative check-in?
Say the word.
Formative check-in?
Also, a formative check-ins is the teachers, several things that they do. They check in to ensure the check for understanding from their lessons, and then also they have data checks with their students as well.
Okay. Oh, well, that was my next question. It was the bottom of that. I thought it was more sharing the information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment in regard to the fall and man, the fall reading and man data. Thank you for putting like the total number of students. We have that to me that helps break down the data a little bit more to see exactly where you need to pinpoint in order to launch your device. It does fluctuate, not necessarily just question very example of one, but what is the bug process from reviewing this? Really place our support and how would that support play out?
So what we have, we started our wing groups, but the supports that we've seen is the intentional small group instruction. And what we looked at for our next round of testing is really being intentional with our small groups, putting those students who are, we need that intentional support. And for teachers, they have their own designated wing groups assigned to their classrooms and small groups doing their instruction as well. And so when we're looking at the I-Rate data, we'd like to focus on that tier two, tier three group so that we can move that needle. And we also look for each individual classroom or other kids that we can really move to jump either a grade level or even more. So those are our technical focuses.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much. All right, moving on. We are actually going to have 4.02 opportunity updates from GPD. So we're going to have Russell come on up and provide us an update.
Good evening. Russell Gaines, our GPD group. Happy to come back and report the project updates. As I have in the past, we'll just cover the middle school construction update. We'll talk through the K2 construction updates, and then exciting, we'll talk about the high school update tonight. As I have in the past, this is just the overall schedule for all three new building projects. I just keep kind of shifting the line, which is good. It's showing progress. But if you can't see the really small data there, the red line is where we're at in November. It shows that the K2 and 6-8 are under construction. We're actually about 25% into construction right now, so it's exciting if you happen to drive by Hesbitz Campus or if you happen to drive by Northfield across the street from the high school. We've seen a lot of masonry going up, and it's exciting to see that progress happen. The bottom of the project is obviously the high school. We're on step two out of three for the building design, so it's called design development, and that's the phase that we're in. There's a lot of progress being made in engineering and floor plans, and we're working with teachers and staff on that development. The long bar, which I may be able to show you, that bar is going to be the construction, which will be starting really soon. And so when I get to the high school update, I'll share where we're at and where it's going and what it's going to look like in all of its forms. Just a reminder, on the middle school, I've shown this site plan before. So this is Northfield Road on the right side, the new middle school, which is the previous Peter Chanel campus or high school site. The football field that used to be there is still back here in the back of the property. And everything dark is the new work. So the bus drop-off, I highlighted the main entry, the bus drop-off here for the kids, the athletics in the back, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade wings as you go through the building. So what that's looking like now on the site is a lot of masonry. Right now, we're building the middle school gym, backup house, administration areas. We're calling that area A and B. It's really the southern portion of that building. The concrete floor in the gym just got poured this week. So a lot is happening every day out there. It's really exciting to see. The building foundations are complete. Waterproofing and foundation drains are complete. Slab-on-grade in the gym and locker rooms. Vapor barrier complete in the locker rooms. That's what that brownish material is. Electrical, HVAC, and plumbing under slab is in progress there. Out on the parking lot, you'll notice the curves are all more asphalt than for at least the binder floors. And the light bulb, our light bulb bases are completely on the site. On the right-hand side, I just thought it was neat to show, we're building a mock-up right now just to, you know, further explore the color of mortar, the color of brick, to make sure everything we do on the building is at least vetted out and perfectly designed and detailed before they implement that across 90,000 square feet of middle school. So we're building a mock-up wall at each project. Just a good way, and we have tons of people looking at that. We'll give an opportunity for the district to look at that. I'll look at that from an architectural standpoint. The Brewer Garrett, the commissioning agent will be looking at that. And so it's just lots of eyes on it to make sure that, get one detail perfect and then handle that. If something's not right, let's fix it here. Shifting over to the Hesbitz site, this is the K2 building behind there. I highlighted the main entry off of Perkins. I showed the bus entry off of Columbus. A lot of that work is underway. It's really similar status as the 6-8 site. Just some things to highlight here. The building foundations are complete. Underground plumbing, electrical is underway. Slab-on-grade is being prepped for concrete. Site light bulb for concrete. And then looking ahead, door frames, asphalt binder doors. Everything there is about two weeks behind the middle school, not by anything being delayed. It's just a matter of how the projects got up. Ultimately, they're both going to open Fall 2027. We're looking at June to July roughly for the both those buildings to be complete. And seeing the staff kind of moving in over that summer, prepping for an August open, kind of ribbon-cutting for both those schools. Again, they're building their mock-up over there. This one's a little bit ahead, but roughly the same kind of idea. We're showing the masonry. We're showing the insulation, vapor barrier flashing, leaps. One window there is being installed there just for, just to take a look at how that flash looks around. And then the light goes around the access right here. You can kind of see Hesbitz in the back. So skipping on to the high school, some exciting things happening. If you don't know already, there's some activity happening on the high school site. I shared this, the last board meeting I gave an update on, but I'll just kind of touch on the facts of the project. It's about 166,000 square foot. We were shifting the drive off of Northfield Road to align with the middle school that's currently under construction to help with internal circulation for vehicles and buses. If you've been to the high school at Dismissal, it's scary. So we're separating buses and vehicular traffic out of the gate. Buses will be able to traverse from the middle school across Northfield in the future, come down the spine between the high school and the football field, and go all the way down to Berwyn and out to Northfield. This area only parks. And so that's just a huge improvement from a site circulation standpoint, safety, kind of separating those vehicles as you can. The high school, the new high school will include career tech. This is really exciting piece, the rear back home, an auditorium. And then I'll break down the phases here in a second, but looking ahead very shortly, February 26th, the North House and Board of Education is going to be demolished to make way for that new high school. It's an important step, and so it's not just the first step. It's actually kind of the second, because we have a pre-demolition phase, work that needs to happen now in order to be able to demolish that without interrupting all the student parking that's on site and bus circulation. So there's things happening now to make way for that demolition that's going to start in February. Construction of the new high school will begin spring, summer of '26, so after those buildings are demolished. And it's anticipated that they complete Fall '28, so one year after the middle school and K2. And then the Central, I call it Central, I'm not sure if you guys call it Central, Central and South House of the high school will remain in place and operational for kids to be there while the high school is under construction. And then when the high school is done, move over and then demolish and build the parking lot. So it's a complicated set of steps or dominoes involved, but we're carefully assigning those tasks, and you might have already noticed that some of that work is happening. So we put together a story. I call this the pre-demolition phase. Obviously, we have the Chanel site over here. We have the high school site, kind of ghosted out the context around it. But we need to look at it from a thousand feet here to just understand how these steps are going to go. There's a lot of text there, and I know Jamarm was able to share this out to the community, staff, and students just from a, here's what to expect between October 2025 and January 2026. Campus is going to start to look different, and it already is. The first step was to build a temporary bus drive. When we take away this parking lot on the north side of the campus, we're not only going to lose parking, we're going to lose the ability for buses to circulate on the Northfield the way they can now. So instead, we're going to have a temporary drive and exit on the Northfield with a new temporary drive. It was important to make way for that because the next step is going to be to get all the parking on the overflow lot on the south side of the lot off of Columbus, and then convert some additional space, which was tennis courts, into parking space. We went out and counted every car that's on the campus and wanted to make sure we were providing adequate parking as you need it now in the future. So instead of entering the school from the north side of the site, you're going to enter it from the south side. That communications were working through with Crystal, the principal of the high school, Stephanie from Transportation, and just trying to get everybody on board with what it's going to look like in its first phase, which will really take shape starting in February. That's when it'll kind of go live. So this is step one. What's going to happen next is, and I had a really hard time showing that, you know, what it looks like over here now, because it's obviously underway, but that's the end. We're going to define this area with the North House and Board Office on. And I'm just showing it here, but you kind of get the idea that that's, we've now carved out the area where the site of the new high school is going to go. What do we park? So we have Columbus, the South overflow lot, and the tennis courts. That provides 107 parking spaces on the tennis courts. And we thought this, it was a good idea to use a surface that we have and just seal it and stripe it. It'll provide adequate parking that we needed without having to build a new parking lot just to get those students and staff to place around. And then that bus drive, I'm showing the buses kind of coming in and through around here and then exiting. Student staff parking would come off of Columbus, circulate north, turn onto Berwyn, and off back-to-back on the Northfield. And then we define kind of a construction fence around this. This is kind of how it's going to look from February of '26 until June of '28. And then obviously, the amazing part is what this campus is going to look like afterward, which we see the middle school complete, which opens in 2027. The high school was opened in 2028. And I didn't show what it would look like with everything on it, but starting in 2028 summer, that Central and South House is going to be demolished. And I'm showing it, just kind of jokes it out in white where it was. That will free up the space to give us the parking and complete everything in spring, summer of '29 after the high school is completed. So a lot of things happening, but you almost have to tell it in a before, bearing an after phase to kind of understand how all that's going to move. It's going to be an active site, and so safety is going to be the highest priority, defining where students and staff are entering the building. We've done lots of projects like this, and so it's a can see the construction. So we're just working on an active site. Safety is going to be a huge concern. Getting the kids into the building from the south side and keeping all the construction on the north is going to be really important. And so with that, happy to answer. Oh, I missed the, sorry, let me go back. When we built the temporary drive, I should note, it was, it was going to be impossible to build that temporary drive without some disruptions to the site. We had to remove some trees, and I know that that's a sensitive topic. When we demolished this high school, inevitably, those trees would have had to been taken down too. We took them down now in an effort to just start clearing the site, putting that temporary drive in and make sure that it was safe to get that drive put in. I did find out that that was a donation from an alumni group, and so I think it would be reminiscent if I didn't say that it's a great opportunity in the future for landscaping to be put back into the future high school site. Just want to make sure I acknowledge that. There also was a historical monument sign right about there. We did salvage that. It was always in the plans. We kind of always wanted to talk about really historical moments inside the high school, and we're going to continue to talk about that. Anything we can salvage and either design into the high school is a great idea. We're talking about the center court of the high school gym court, designing that into like a display case or doing some really fun things with some of that stuff that's already bought and included in the high school. So we have a little bit of time for the Central and South House to kind of go in, investigate, know what is important to salvage, and then we'll make sure that the contractors take it out, securely salvage it and securely store it until it's ready to be put into the new high school or some other way designed in. So there's a lot that goes into that. Obviously, starting in February, it's going to look a lot different out there, but I thought it'd be good to just give you guys an update on where everything's at, where it's headed, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm sure we have a few questions. I think for reiterating this, we did that. I know there's very many questions.
Yes, well, thank you. I want to start with the new road just being put through. Because what I noticed with the Because what I noticed with the drawings after the, uh, the existing high school was taken away, that road isn't there. So we are thinking to create this road, but then the road is going to be broken up.
Any additional questions?
Uh, why did we also choose to make the tennis courts, uh, a parking lot instead of paving maybe more of that grassy area, um, to extend the parking lot that much? Because then I have two other questions.
Um, I, we did look at that grass area to the east of the south block. That's a point practice that the high school has. We, we talked to J C and just said, uh, if we can find another place to save that field, uh, and then we, we already have a hundred and seven parking spaces on the tennis courts. There'll still be, there'll still be a field there once the, I'm sorry, there'll still be ports there in some condition after the, the parking goes away. So if you want to turn them into tennis courts again or pickleball or something else in the future, um, it's still going to have the same base. It'll just have parks on the front of two acres. So there's still like, there's still a base there for something to happen in the future. I showed you full transparency is grass, but it doesn't happen. We can make that, the district can make that decision before it gets taken out in twenty twenty-eight.
Um, you mentioned the auditorium that's one of the, how many seats does that sit?
Right now, it's five hundred and seventy-five.
You say right now?
Yeah, because I just looked for the chairs. Um, we, we work with a, a rep that rotates chairs, depending on the size and configuration, it goes up and down a few, but that's what it's at. We, we did a couple, um, precedent studies on what that looks like for the district and what that looks like for the community. Uh, it was a, it was a big selling point when the bond was passed, and so having an auditorium is paramount, we had to have that. Um, so it's not going anywhere, it's not going to come up overnight, it's in the building.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hereina, thank you so much, we so appreciate it. I just want to take a quick moment and thank our I T. I know we are having internet issues, so you have us somehow online so people can still see us, so I appreciate you taking care of that. I know it's not easy, but we truly appreciate your, your hard work and, and trying to.
We jumped over to Facebook for anyone who might be messaging you guys to say that YouTube isn't working, it was this internet connection, YouTube's trying.
For those who may not have known her, we are on Facebook, so if anybody wants to watch live on Facebook, they can. This will, I'm sure you all will have this replaying again also, so we'll make sure we post that, so thank you. All right, moving on, we are going to go to our consent agenda. Uh, five point zero one. Do the, I'm going to have, um, I'm sorry, I can have a motion for our consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second. It has been motion by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Are there any questions at this time?
Yes, I have. Um, S, why are we rescinding so much from the previous, uh, needs? What's the purpose of why we're rescinding? Because it says rescinding a policy, everyone who takes is a part of that. Some of this requirement is a lot.
For the first one on your app.
It was originally put on the board agenda under the wrong amount, so we have to rescind it, and if you go down a little bit further, it will be on there for the correct amount, under the supplemental.
Um, and for the second one.
The gentleman took a different position and cannot more review those supplemental positions or chose not to those supplemental positions. He, it's not effective in the moment, but he chose not to.
Thank you so much. Any additional questions? All right, hereina, roll call please.
Yes, Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
No.
Ms. Carter?
Yes. Pass is three to one, board, thank you. We are now going to move forward. Sorry, internet is not working so badly, but then we'll have to send it in there. We're now on to our superintendent's report. We are going to have Dr. Pritch at this time.
Thank you, Board President, Vice President, and Board Members. I'm here to present the superintendent's report. Moving on to, uh, six, six point zero one, administrative personnel, approval of the following administrative personnel as presented. Uh, six point zero two, the service contract under the Department of the Executive Director of Academic Achievement, a motion to approve service contract as presented. Six point zero three, uh, contract, uh, under the Department of the Executive Director of Human Resources. There are, uh, a couple under this, uh, department, motion to approve service contract as presented. Six point zero four, this is under the Department of Executive Director of Operations, there are a few contracts up under this department, motion to approve the service contracts as presented. Six point zero five, motion to approve, uh, facilities request as presented. And lastly, six point zero six, approval of the job description as presented. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go back to six point zero one, the administrative personnel, may I have a motion?
What can we do?
It has been motion by Mrs. Macklin, second by Mrs. Boynton, that we approve the, um, dean of academics, um, approval. Do we have any questions at this time?
I don't have any questions, but I just have a comment, and it goes back to previous statements that I've made about just the transfers and how things are happening in our district. Um, it's creating a lot of instability. So for me, um, I don't think this is the best interest again for children again or the support in the building, um, and so I just wanted to make sure to have that in the background.
Anyone else? Hereina, roll call please.
Yes. Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
No.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes three to one, thank you, board. We're now on to six point zero two, the service contract for the Executive Director of Academic Achievement. Um, this is with, um, E S C of Northeast Ohio for Columbus Intermediate School. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been motion by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the service contract as presented. Are there any questions? Hereina, roll call please.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes four to zero, thank you, board. On to six point zero three, the service contract for the Executive Director of Human Resources. We have the read here, a red cross, well, two, I'm sorry, there was an agreement, um, and then addendum, and then we have one for treehouse. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve, please.
Second. It's been motion by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve, um, the service contract as presented. Are there any questions? Hereina, roll call please.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes four to zero, thank you, board. Moving on to six point zero four, the service contract for the Executive Director of Operations, uh, four contracts listed, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the service contract as presented.
Second. It's been motion by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, are there any questions?
I do, I have a question. As it pertains to the approval of, uh, for the roofing repairs, I just want to know what takes precedent, um, when we decide what roofing repairs or ceiling repairs are done? Um, as I know that there is some exposed roofing or ceiling at Heskett, which was a previous incident that occurred and it was never completed. Um, however, we are looking at doing something at that athletic complex.
I can have Dr. Snyder come up and answer that, please, thank you.
So in terms of the precedent, or which one takes precedence, and how we can triage those things, we look at the roof repairs, and there are a lot of repairs across the district in a systematic way, in terms of trying to play in the future for R P I expenditures and how we're going to do that original, and that's more than safety guys, because we can't. The athletic facility, uh, roof is in significant disruption, and there were active leaks in that area, there are active leaks in there. So we had discussed that, sort of the conversation that happened when it first came in, it was like summer, that there's damage that will continue to occur, we don't address that.
Can I have a little closer to my, I'm sorry?
Sure, yeah, sorry, yeah, about it. So there would be ongoing damage to that roof, we don't address it, and that is of course a really important facility cost, that's part of the footprint launcher, so we, we need to have that addressed. So no reservations about asking for approval for that, and it's absolutely our message is to make sure that that's taken care of. There are a number of the roof projects that we've discussed over the last several months, obviously, the maintenance garage is one, but it's pending. We also have conversations recently about integrating, or have short-term repairs in the high school, get us through the next few years in a cost-efficient way. I'm not aware of current active needs at Heskett, checking to see what the status of that is, so I can't speak to previous conversations about maybe having to repair it or that choosing not to repair it. That was something that was a discussion about pushing that a little bit further in the future. Excellent. Give some more information on that, so I can answer that part more clearly about if there's something that we should be addressing.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there's some exposed, like, ceiling, um, the windows wings from previous leak, um, so you can make into that if you want, are you there?
Excellent. I know we've been doing quite a bit of roof work, not roof work, but work on the roof with, or roofed up units, but I guess I will put that to mark.
Um, the other one that I had is lease agreement, is that the, um, current individuals on the southern side of the administrative building?
Okay, that's right, I want to know if that's one. Yes, that is. All right, thank you, Dr. Pritch. Any additional questions? Hereina, roll call please.
Yes. Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Uh, no.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes three to one, board. All right, we're moving on to six point zero five, the building permit, um, special facilities request, um, for the Cleveland Uni Chilling Championships. May I have a motion for the facilities request? Stop vote. It has been motion by Mrs. Turner Birch, and second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the facility request as presented. Are there any questions? Hereina, roll call please.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes. Thank you, board, passes four to zero. We are now on to six point zero six, we are on to the, um, job description as presented for the Library Media Specials. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Macklin, second by Mrs. Boynton. May, um, are there any questions?
I do. Um, as it pertains to this role, isn't there someone already occupying this role? Turn.
Good, here you are, Dr. Pritch.
Yes, we do have several individuals that are currently occupying this role. The reason for the request is because the job description as it is written right now states that the job will be eight point zero hours a day. And we actually have some inequities across the district in terms of how many hours individuals in that role or different buildings work. And of course, we have an individual who's retiring from that position at the high school, we'll be able to repost that position tomorrow or early next week. And we don't feel that we want to have a number of hours explicitly listed on the job description, because that takes away our discretion to, uh, adjust those inequities. So what I would propose, with that job is reposted, is that the contracted time, the hours allotted for acquisition would be similar to the teachers' hours, so that we have an appropriate amount of time before and after the students are in buildings, so they can have some fair, or grab something at the end of the day. But as best practice, I would also state that I don't think that having a specific hour listed on the job description is generally helpful, because that absolutely should be considered in the future. Things change, bell schedules may change, you know, specific tasks of that role may change, and that's, that's the reason for.
Okay, since it's not in here, that's why I just wanted to ask.
That's correct.
And just to clarify, it's mainly the hours of the work, and it's nothing really else doing change within the description, correct?
Correct, no other changes to the job description at all, I think that is a rule.
Thank you so much. Uh, root, roll call please.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes four to zero, thank you, board. All right, we are now on to our sheriffs report, you want to handle it, say that?
Thank you, Board President, Vice President, Board Members. Uh, before I start my report, I do want to apologize, I misspoke at the last board meeting when I said that it was not proper for a board member to make a motion, uh, during new business, old business, a board member can make a motion, so I do apologize for my mistake, and, uh, please forgive me for that. My first item is seven point zero one, service contract with Bonefish. Uh, this is for a five-year approval, we receive a discount for doing it for five years. Bonefish is a, a system that helps my department identify any potential fraud with paying vendors, and then also assist with payroll as far as licensure, uh, for our staff members. Seven point zero two, seven point is, uh, gifts and donations. Uh, Ms. Kayla Huff is donating a two thousand fourteen Ford Escape to the Auto Mechanics Program. And Office Max is donating one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-four cents for classroom supplies to Clendale Primary School. And also shoes that fit on behalf of Nordstrom is donating seven five dollars for P E M, we says at Clendale Primary School. I do want to note that Kayla Huff is one of our employees, a teacher in the district. Seven point zero three, frontline education, time and attendance. This system will, uh, better speak with our current systems, it'll help, um, school secretaries, my department, classified staff, uh, really anyone that clocks in and clocks out. We currently have time clock plus, uh, we are looking to move on from them as they do not talk to our other systems, so it makes it a lot of manual processes, which costs time and money. Uh, the cost of this frontline education time attendance offsets time clock plus, there's no difference in the contract fee for them. And then seven point zero four is the approval of the following three purchase orders, one of them happened to be time clock plus. Unfortunately, we still need to continue service with them as we implement frontline, so we still have to pay them for those services, Verizon wireless and overdrive. My only explanation for these is they were emailed to an employee that is no longer with the district, so the invoice has kind of gotten lost in the shuffle of switching duties. And when a purchase order was placed, it was past the time of the deadline for it then now.
Thank you so much. All right, we're going to go ahead to seven point zero one, um, motion for service contract as presented for the, um, five years with Bonefish, may I have a motion? Motion to approve. Second. It has been motion by Mrs. Macklin, second by Mrs. Boynton, are there any questions at this time? Hereina, roll call please.
Yes. Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes four to zero, thank you, board. The number one is seven point zero two, it gives the donations as presented, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, seconded by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the donations as presented, are there any questions? Hearing them, roll call please.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner-Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, four to zero, thank you board. I just want to say thank you to all who are donating, we truly, truly, truly appreciate that, thank you, thank you so much. We are now moving on to seven point zero three, with frontline education time and attendance, may I have a motion for the contract as presented?
Motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second. It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, and seconded by Mrs. Turner-Birch, that we approve the service contract as presented. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing them, roll call please.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Turner-Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes four to zero, thank you board. We are now on to four point zero four, for our purchase orders, may I have a motion for the purchase orders as presented?
Motion to approve the purchase orders as they are presented.
Second. It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, seconded by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the purchase orders as presented, are there any questions? Hearing them, roll call please.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner-Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes four to zero, thank you board. All right, we are moving along, we are at eight point zero one. We are on our third reading and approval of the revised board policies, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve board policy revisions as they are presented.
Second. It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, and seconded by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the board policy revisions as presented, are there any questions?
So the reason why these were brought back again for a third was because I asked a question at the last meeting in regard to the purpose of the revisions, when these were policies that were already adopted and approved earlier this year. So we were pending that answer.
Is anyone able to answer those? I see you look it up, thank you, please. I see one of those has been resigned. Please be patient with us one moment, as we are double checking this.
Is there any specific questions on any of these policies, or just the reason behind them?
No reason behind them. This was the question that was asked two weeks ago, as to why we post policy?
Did you send someone up, and probably what you can do?
No, I did not, because it was written down, and I, and that whole thing was tabled in the first place. That was two weeks ago, we're doing research now. So not further belaboring the time, can we move to once again, roll this to another time where we have an answer and a reason why we're rescinding or approving the same policy in the same year?
So this was a revision of the possible changes.
So the one for attendance, you said was Hospital ninety-six?
Yes, it was revised due to, uh, Policy fifty-two hundred, attendance was revised due to the implementation of Hospital ninety-six, which involved an overhaul of student attendance and truancy laws.
I want to make sure that we're able to give you these minutes, because this is a very...
Budget, uh, excuse me, budget, I'm sorry, Policy fifty-two twenty-three was due to the budget bill, which further amended, uh, the release time across religious instruction, to now require that board policy authorize participating students to be excused from school to attend RTRI for at least one period per week, so we had to revise that.
So unfortunately, there is no, there's just rescinding, anti-arrestment, there is no full explanation, and just said rescind. Okay, so this also, I'm sorry, so the anti-arrestment is, I want to say it's because of the D E I, the wording-related garbage, and we have to unfortunately remove that from some of our policies?
That applies to fourteen twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-two, forty-one twenty-two, etc.
So the fourteen twenty-two, sixteen sixty-two, you said thirty-one twenty-two?
Thirty-one twenty-two as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Hearing them, roll call please.
Yes, Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner-Birch?
No.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes three to zero, three to one, thank you board. We are now on to the treasures contract, if you could explain, if I know the dates correct?
It was the dates, they were incorrect, it's changing the dates from January first of twenty-five. It changed from January first twenty-five through August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five, to January first twenty-five through July thirty-first of twenty-eight, which is the entire contract.
So it should be your contract?
Yep.
Thank you so much. All right, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution for the addendum one of our treasures contract.
It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, excuse me, and seconded by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the resolution for addendum, for the dates to be corrected from the original, for the length of this contract. Are there any questions? Roll call please.
Yes, Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner-Birch?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes four to zero, thank you board. We do have one here, eight point zero three, emergency resolution discussion, I do want to have additional conversation with you on that. So that we can have conversation, I'm also going to have, thank board to come up, because some of the condition happening there, they're actually doing within the district, so we want to work it out and explain.
Yes, so, I submitted this resolution, this resolution for us to consider a good pathway for plans to assist our families who are being affected with the federal shutdown, and not having access to E T V or SNAP or W I D items, which impacts a number of our students. So, as we know, hunger and nutrition directly affects student attendance, concentration, academic performance, and behavioral health. So I just wanted to make sure that we are recognizing that some of our children may be on free or reduced meal programs, and so if there's a way that we can wrap around our community for an interim time period, if they're facing food insecurity. Now, I'm already aware that we do have a community room in which there are options to be offered, however, there was some statement in, in the resolution, I can't seem to pick it up. Where it states people like them to do, like the district to do, to help impact, and I know Taylor, you mentioned that there was a portion of money that might even be allotted, and that's why we needed a conversation over just going ahead to approval. So can you tell me at what point in the resolution, is that under the coordination and response that I indicated? In the resolution?
So, yeah, we do offer free breakfast in our source, students were completely a hundred percent C D P, so every student receives a breakfast, every student, or just receives lunch every single day. That is all funded by federal funds in our O six fund, but that's where those funds would stop. If we were to continue beyond those hours, this would have to be picked up by the general fund. As far as the resources that we have to provide or purchase.
So, as it alludes to also being able to buy outside of regular school hours, access to food or and or other type of free courses, is that where money would be put in?
That's where general fund, right, that would have to be, yes.
Okay.
Faith, if I could have you come on up and speak on some things that your department is, S E O program is doing, towards this goal, I appreciate it.
So, we have two donations going on right now, from every school in the department. One of them is our gift card donation, where we have, like, for every staff, they present a gift card, and we ask for food particularly, so we put down things like Save-A-Lot, you put Walmart as well for Save-A-Lot, Audis, Darnido, for this SNAP, for this reason. They name go in, like, a pool, and they go in, like, some half tickets, massages, so we try to make a fund for staff as well, and beneficial for them helping, they will see something. Also, we have our turkey, our first annual turkey drive from the each building plus each department. So, we count up all our departments from treasure, our T and everything, we're looking at about fifteen, thirteen, fifteen turkeys. And so it was just a turkey drive, but honestly, our staff has already reached out, like, actually, like, oh, we're gonna give a whole basket. S E O, we're gonna give a whole basket. So it was a turkey drive, but we are going to give a basket to our families, and then, you know, our students still take home the backpacks. So that's the weekend backpack program, where they take home for Saturday and Sunday, they take home breakfast and lunch. And they continue to say, you know, if they need it, and I can always up the numbers with our Greater Food Bank, they're always willing, they drop off every Thursday, and they go home with students every Friday.
So that's what I was gonna inquire about, is that if there's a way to offer those during the week if needed, if anybody needed to get access to anything additional?
To offer the bags?
Yeah.
Okay, I could reach out to Greater Cleveland Food Bank and see, I know I was on a call with them, and it is a waiting list to actually be in the program, so we had to hurry up and say, yes, we want to remain in the program. So I'm not sure, but I will reach out to them and ask them that. At the same time, you know, as we receive information, we are pushing it out, so I have Swansons, and your feeding people for our students, well, under eighteen. Free, you don't have to purchase anything for the week of November the fifth through the twelfth. You'll get a meal, like a water, sandwich, and I think it was something else on there. So they're doing it, but, and then I did receive from someone else a list of all the food banks and just different programs throughout. So as we continue to receive those, I have pushed them out to, um, tomorrow, we pushed them out to the community, and so that it can spread out, and then our social workers also pushing out, so we're continuing. Anytime we get those resources, we push them out. And I've been on a couple calls, actually, there's another call going on about SNAP, I think tomorrow, so I'll be on another call. Anytime I'm getting those, I'm jumping on them to see how can we support our families.
Thank you again, I know you were mentioning the Swansons, I know this has been everywhere online. It's for, um, Swansons, it's for persons eighteen and under with presenting your SNAP or E T V household card, so definitely take advantage.
I saw Audis, you know, well, we're trying to verify it, but Audis have the meals where they receive, they found these, like, for forty hours. Yeah, so, that as well, I know the social workers push that, so we're, we're steadily pushing out everything that we get to help our families.
So if somebody can generate, generate a donation in cash, how would they do that? Or if they want to write a check, who don't have a write a check?
I'll have to give them a check.
It would be better if these schools, this rate, then we would recognize it, definitely.
So, still as far as the conversation, the resolution is just indicating that the board is recognizing that this is an emergency measure, and it's necessary for us to take some type of preservation. So that's what I would really like for us to just approve that, given that showing our community that this board is here, and the district is here for the, for the community, as they go through another barrier that families are having to face at this time.
I would like to mention as well that there was some breaking news, that the federal judge is, is actually advising the president to, um, release the full amount of SNAP benefits, and he wants that to be done by tomorrow. So I know they, I know it said that the sixty-five percent, he wants the full amount, he has sent that directive to the President of the United States. He has sent that directive to the President of the United States, and he said he wanted it done by tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll get some relief.
I think everyone's questioning, and believe me, I love the idea, I love the resolution. I think we need to have additional discussions on how we would have, how we would pay for it. If we can't get a food bank, then we've got a company for it somehow. Again, love the idea, I actually want a little bit more conversation today, so we can make sure that when we do this, it is successful. And it's not weird because we already know what we're looking like for the next five years. And we want to make sure that, you know, we're not cutting ourselves, we don't know what's going to happen if we don't have a board.
Well, when I see that we're using grant funds to serve the community at evening events, we can also find a way to use the funds that will actually continue to go to our community members who, you know, just may not have it at the time. I don't know how the other board members feel. I'd wish to have additional conversations, see where this could possibly come from.
I agree, we need to have some conversation with the treasurer.
Yeah, we will continue looking at how we can use our funds for these programs.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there any additional information that you would like to go over?
Well, yes, because I want to go back to Taylor's apology regarding the, you know, the statements. So if we also go to the minutes that we did approve for the meeting, at the end, it does indicate that it was noted that this was not on the agenda. So that would have to be stricken because of the fact it did not have to be on the agenda when we know Robert's rules also in our policies. So can we go back after the fact to strike out that line in the previous minute, given that that's not true?
We can come into the next meeting if that's what we want to do.
Okay. I would like for us to be able to do that. And just to shed a little light on something that I had mentioned in a previous meeting before. In business, there is an understanding that the greatest asset is your bottom line, or the ones in which you serve. In our school environment, the bottom line is the student who values, or without them, there is no one to serve. This notion needs to continue to be kept in mind in all decision-making, including the reactive responses, hyper-surveillance, surveillance, and hyper-discipline practices, which we know, according to the Education Law Center, which states that zero tolerance policies, aggressive pacing in schools, and other extreme school discipline practices lead to high rates of suspension, expulsion, and also intern arrest of students. This results in large numbers of students being pushed out of the school and showing the criminal justice system. And further, it's asked for a trauma mental health manifesting system and institutionalization. There is historical evidence-based data that proves that the culture of this district is oppressive, punitive, petty, and manipulative in its administrative leadership practices. This has been shown in evidence of disparate disproportionate discipline practices towards educators, staff, parents, and students in this district. This can be proven from the data of the rural suspensions and administrative leagues. In this district, there is an extremely high rate of written referrals, automatic suspensions, and the intersectionality of the two, especially if they are identified as having a discipline. This comes from a dissonant characteristic of subjectivity labeled as disrespect or disruptive. The same is placed on our educators and our parents, who speak up or want to speak up against or advocate for their children against the practice of this discipline policies and practice need to be reviewed, we review them, and however, we still have a presence of adultification of our students. And these need to stop. There's inconsistencies on the discipline, and we have shared that with the last board meeting. I also just want to shed light that when we're saying disparate and disproportionately decision-making, is how we can allow our own employee to disregard, bully, intimidate either one of our own, ourselves. And in fact, and yes, it is exactly that, when you also have to use your security to try to isolate or tell a board member to behave when that is their hub. I'm a boss, you're a boss, you're a boss, all of us are one of their bosses. So I think that is highly inappropriate. And then, to be talking over, and then intimidating another board member to go ahead and make the motion when it was out of line in the first place. I really find it difficult as colleges that we are allowing this behavior. So once again, I am making a motion, and I am asking that this board see that we place this superintendent on leave pending an investigation and/or have this superintendent resign. I am asking. Misconduct and the behavior should not be acceptable. I'm sure if I was an employee, I would have been placed on leave if I spoke back the way that you all have allowed our own individuals to be in that life. Can I have a second?
Chairwoman? Is there anything else from anyone? All right, hearing that, we're gonna go ahead to nine point zero one. Have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
It has been motion by Mrs. Boynton, and second by Mrs. Mattlin, that we adjourn the meeting. Roll call please.
Yes. Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Maglin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner-Birch?
Hi, guys. Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, thank you all, and we will see you in two weeks. And we will make sure we have a definite consultation before we come.